We all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
I want to welcome everyone to the lower one of Board of Supervisor, regular scheduled public meeting for October 11th, 2022. The Board of Supervisors have met in executive session on October 3rd, and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personal and legal matters. Also want to bring to everyone's attention that the township was closed yesterday. And as an observance with Columbus Day and Indigenous People's Day. There will also be a Board of Supervisors public budget workshop on Monday, October 17th at 7:00 PM to review capital projects and funding. I want to extend a congratulations to Detective Beth Samborn, who will be honored by Mission Kids during the Mugs for a Mission fundraiser event at the Tap Room 23 in Bridgeport on Friday, October 21st from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. Just as an update or an aside, upcoming events that we're going to coordinate with the Lower Gwinnett Community Response Unit are going to be our trunk and treat, trunk and treat at Ambler YMCA on October 29th from 2:00 to 4:00. Cider with the Cops on Saturday, October 29th from 1:00 to 3:00. And that is in partnership with Giant Food Store. And also Philo Cop Car on Saturday, November 4th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. And food donations will be accepted for Maddie Dixon Community Cupboard in Ambler. October 29th is also National Prescription Drug Take Back Day, and the police station will be open from 10:00 to 2:00 PM to accept old or unnecessary medications. Lower Gwinnett Parks and Recreation are having a concert and movie night also on Saturday, October 29th at Gwinnett Mercy University. It's going to start at 6:00 PM with a performance by the Eric Mintel Tete, followed by showing a Hocus Pocus at dusk. And I do believe it's the original Hocus Pocus. First up, we have a presentation by the Wissickin Clean Watershed. So the board got in our packets, an overview of the Clean Water Partnership with the Hicken. Guys have a few things you want to say. If you could just introduce yourselves.
We have actually a slide. As well, good evening, everybody. Thank you to the board for giving us a couple of minutes to talk about the partnership, of which Laura Gwinnett is a member and hopefully continues to be a member. My name is Brandon Ford. I am one of the co-chairs of the partnership. Along with, I have Drew Shaw from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as well as Aaron Landis from the Wissickin Trails. And we're here to take a couple of minutes tonight and kind of give you a little quick 15-minute overview of who we are, what we're doing, what we've done, and kind of the exciting next steps that we have kind of planned for all the members of the partnership. There's our beautiful faces. There we go. That's who we are. So we are going to tag team the presentation. So we are going to kind of shift between all of us because I don't want to hog all the spotlight, so.
So the Wissickin Clean Water Partnership is a voluntary collaboration among 13 municipalities, including the city of Philadelphia and four wastewater treatment plants. As you can see from the map, the entities that make up this collaboration include over 98% of the Wissickin watershed. This partnership is an amazing example of how municipalities can work across boundaries in order to protect a common resource that is really valuable to us all. As we all know, waterways do not abide by human-made boundaries. And so it's really critical to protect them collectively and in partnership with the municipalities of our watershed. So in order to understand a little bit about the background of the partnership, unfortunately, we're all going to have to learn about TMDLs, which is a regulatory term. TMDL stand for Total Maximum Daily Load. Some people like to describe what this is as a pollution diet for streams. So essentially, it Total Maximum Daily Load represents how much of a specific pollutant, the maximum amount that can be input into a stream while still maintaining a healthy stream according to state criteria. So essentially, when a stream is is found to be impaired, which is again a state regulatory term, which means that it is below a healthy, it has not met water quality standards to be a healthy stream. So when a stream is found to be impaired, it triggers our state regulatory agencies, the Department of Environmental Protection, to set TMDLs for these waterways. As you can see from this image, the state typically models or calculates TMDLs based on naturally occurring background loads, runoff from the landscape, as well as this category called wasteload allocation, which includes municipal wastewater, stormwater, MS4s. And so that's where these TMDLs kick in to regulate those inputs into the stream. Wissickin Creek is an impaired waterway. So these TMDLs do apply to Wissickin Creek. Unfortunately, TMDLs are very expensive to implement, as well as time-consuming. So the partnership came around in order to create an alternative to the TMDLs. The alternative is going to be a more holistic plan that's going to be locally based, cheaper to implement, as well as data-driven and flexible as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Drew.
Good evening. Just a little bit about the Water Quality Improvement Plan. This is a project like I've never been involved with before. I've been with the county for 30 years, so it's new to everybody. But it is locally driven, as Aaron said, and it is in partnership with DEP and EPA. Often, we find ourselves across the table in an adversarial relationship with the regulatory agencies. But in this case, and this is unusual, in this case, everybody's working together and all heading in the same direction. When the original TMDL came out, we all looked at it and said, this is going to be prohibitively expensive, possibly technically not achievable. And we said, there's got to be an alternative. And often, the alternative is the municipalities band together and sue the EPA. But the EPA didn't want that. We didn't really want that. And the EPA said, well, there is this alternative where you can create your own plan with guidance from us to achieve the same results, to achieve that water quality standard that Aaron mentioned. So that's what we're involved in, the water quality plan. It's adaptive, meaning that as we implement it, we can make changes. We can say, well, this really works. Or this didn't work so well. Or this is inexpensive, relatively inexpensive, and it has benefits. So let's do a lot of that. So it's a flexible management plan. We are continually going to be monitoring and incorporating that data to inform our decisions. And we may change, we may tweak things a little bit. We're not going to completely change direction as we move through implementation, but we can tweak things based on the data that we accumulate. And some of the projects that we're talking about, you can see on the screen, things like stream bank stabilization projects, which will reduce bank erosion and keep the sediment out of the stream. Things like basin retrofits in your existing basins, they can be naturalized. Things like habitat restoration and repairing buffers. If there's a large institutional use that mows their 30 acres, but only uses five or six, why not talk to them? Let's convert some of that to meta. Habitat restoration has benefits to water quality.
Thanks, Drew. We want to be mindful of everyone's time. You all have copies of the full presentation. But we did list a couple of the benefits from, you know, addressing that holistic approach, you know, increased capacity from 13 municipalities working together. The economies of scales, you know, we can do bigger, more impactful projects that can be, the cost can be spread out across all 13 municipalities, which includes the city of Philadelphia. Our projections, you know, these are what we could achieve if we kind of went at it alone, the historical trend versus what we could achieve together through the Water Quality Improvement Plan, the WQIP. Go ahead, Jamie. So, you know, this partnership has been around for a while. I've only been co-chair since January of this year. So, you know, I'm kind of want to get in front of all the municipalities and really show what we've done. Because, you know, for the most part, a lot of people might not be aware of, you know, the hard work that has taken place behind the scenes. You know, anyone with kids getting 13 municipalities to agree to anything, let alone additional four wastewater treatment plants is a great achievement. I can't get my three kids to agree on what to eat for dinner. So, you know, 13 municipalities agreeing to pursue this plan, excuse me, is an accomplishment in and of itself. We've done all the data collection in collaboration with Temple University, Penn Environment Council. There's just so many technical advisors involved that have given their expertise in providing all the data that we have presented to DEP and EPA, which is the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection and the Federal Environmental Protection Agency. We've already identified projects with the assistance of the municipalities involved. I was involved with those identified for Springfield. Jamie was involved with those identified for Lower Gwinnett, and so on and so on. We have a draft plan. The draft plan has been submitted by, to the regulators. Regulators have already provided comments, and for the most part, minus a couple minor touches, they're on board. So, you know, an approved plan is forthcoming. And, you know, that has not been easy. We've had to negotiate with the Federals agents and the state in terms of approving this plan. And this is pretty much one of the more exciting items, which, you know, we're going to quickly wrap this up in the next couple of minutes. But Drew can speak to the 1.5 million that we've gotten for project.
Thanks. As you know, the American Recovery Plan Act or ARPA funds came to municipalities and to the county. And so the county said, if you have a proposal, submit it and we'll review it. So we put together a proposal. We put it together originally for 11.5 million to fund a lot of the projects we've been hearing about. The review committee, which is an independent committee, looked at it and they said, well, we'll give you 1.5 million, which is a tenth of what we're looking for. But nevertheless, it's a good chunk of money, and we're hoping this will get things started. It'll jumpstart the implementation. It will also help us work through some of the issues we need to work through as a group, deciding who to fund with what money. We're going to go for grant money throughout the implementation period, and we're going to have to divide that money up. So this is helping us decide how we're going to do that.
And just taking it home for the board. And again, thank you for the time to kind of give you a quick update. These are a couple of our action items that we have moving forward. You know, we're going to submit that revised plan based on the feedback we've gotten from the regulators. We're going to finalize an intergovernmental agreement. We have one existing for the planning stage. Now, we're going to be moving into actually getting stuff done in the implementation phase, where we have shovels in the ground and projects being done. We're going to select and design implementation projects based on projects that we've received from the municipalities with feedback from the municipalities. And, you know, ultimately, we're going to get that approval for the plan, and then we're going to proceed with a project of implementation. So with that, you know, we're here to answer any of your questions. And we, again, thank you for the time.
I have two questions.
Yes, Sarah.
Thank you. It was very important. We follow this with Jamie and Mark. And I think we're kind of up to date. But if DEP and EPA approves the plan, and it does not, for whatever reason, have the impact on TMDL that you expected to have, are we still in compliance?
One of the ways we set up the plan is to address exactly that. There's a 20-year implementation period, and we are going to have milestones along the way. If we don't hit a milestone, automatically, we begin to analyze the data and figure out why we're not hitting that milestone. And how do we change things? Maybe ramp up the implementation or whatever to make sure we hit the next milestone. Hitting the, being in compliance is going to be interesting. The, we're working, one of the things we're working on with the regulators is how that compliance is going to be measured. Is it going to be part of the MS4 permit? Is it going to be a separate permit, that kind of thing? And they are open to suggestions. We have an idea that we think will work, making it part of the MS4 permit. And we're also saying that instead of just going for one number, often DEP says you have to this number to be in compliance. We want to say, these are a handful of metrics, and we want to be in this range for the majority of the metrics, and that will count as compliance. So it's a more holistic look at how we can say, yes, we're in compliance. And DEP is open to it. They're considering it, so we're hopeful.
But I guess, to answer my question, by DEP agreeing to our plan, that does not mean we're in compliance, even if we follow that. It's, we haven't gotten to what compliance will be yet.
I think I see what you're saying. I mean, the plan does outline a course of action. As long as we stick to that course of action and we achieve the results that we think we're going to.
It's those two things. If you stick to the course of action that DEP agreed to, that's not sufficient. You have to also meet the measures, even though we don't know that the action will lead to the result.
We're pretty confident that it will, through the science that was provided by Temple and also Philadelphia Water Department. Their scientists there are helping us with this project as well. So we're pretty confident that we can, through tweaking the wastewater treatment plant's operations and implementing the projects that we talked about. And there's also some programs and policies that we'd like to suggest, such as repair and buffer preservation and land conversion, things like that. We're pretty sure that we could hit the targets that we're shooting for. And the targets are not as strict as the TMDL, but we've given DEP enough documentation that they are likely to approve the plan with the less strict targets.
I have two questions, really quick. I'm not a scientist, so we're going to go really quick.
No, they're mine.
So you did talk about you got ARPA money from the county. I'm assuming that's Montgomery County. Did you apply to get any of the ARPA money or the CARES money from Philadelphia County, seeing as though they are part of?
I don't think Philadelphia did to apply.
So, to best of my knowledge, the county in Philadelphia didn't offer that program. Montgomery County made the decision, the county commissioners, to offer it to, you know, basically, an open program.
Bidding program.
Yeah, basically, a bidding program. And, you know, we got wind of it, and we put our submission in. And now we were, you know, honored enough to be selected.
So Philadelphia does have money. They have more money than the rest of Montgomery County. And they got their money because of the city of the first class from the federal government directly. So they didn't have to go through the state.
Correct.
So there still is an opportunity, I guess, to make a plea. I'm just wondering if the consortium as a whole has asked, and Philadelphia is huge.
One of the issues with Philadelphia Water Department, spending money outside of their service area. There's, that's always been difficult. They will provide technical assistance, and they've been doing that. They're part of the partnership, and we've benefited greatly from their experience. But for them to spend money outside of their service area, I don't really understand why, but it's very difficult. They have to go through their board and through Philadelphia Council to get that.
City Council.
Yes.
I'm just only curious because we're going to.
Downstream to Philadelphia anyway, so maybe it's all bit upstream.
That.
I mean, it affects.
Yeah, to that point, that's the same argument I make in Springfield, you know. If something happens up in Lower Gwinnett, you know, that comes down to Springfield at some point. So it behooves my township, you know. I don't represent my township. I'm just impassioned. So, you know, I make the case that if we can help out and possibly spend some funds in a project that's in Upper Gwinnett, Lower Gwinnett, yes, that's not, you know, being spent in Springfield, but we benefit from it because we're stopping water where it's at.
So the reason I'm asking is, are our monies restricted from being used in Philadelphia? Like grant monies that we, we are, so we cannot use it in Philadelphia? So it's only the Montgomery County municipalities that can.
Yes, the county's bonds have to be spent in the county.
Okay. Okay. My second question is, I know that you said we're very close. I guess, can you give us a ballpark as to how close we are? Are we talking about three to six months, nine months, a year?
We originally thought we'd have, I'm sorry. We originally thought we'd have the draft plan ready for submission by the end of the year. We've been having very small group intense meetings with the regulators to go over specific parts of the plan. In the last meeting we had, they brought up something that's going to take, it'll take us into the first quarter of next year to address their questions and their comments, and then we could submit the plan. So I think if we don't hit the end of the year deadline, and we may not, I think we're first quarter submitting to DEP for review.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, so once the grand unified plan is agreed to, then, well, Mark and Jamie, I guess, have been keeping us up to date on this process. But then the practical outcome would be that your group would come back to us and make a proposal to us as to what our role is going to be?
Yes, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, as Drew and some of the technical subcommittees working on, you know, the finer bug scores and finer details with DEP, with the scientists, I'm working with the managers in terms of structuring how that implementation's going to actually work. Because, you know, like Jamie with you all, I also haven't elected for it that I don't, you know, represent. I have to go back to them to get their permission. So we're exploring different implementation structures. You know, who represents each municipality in terms of, you know, whether it continues to be a partnership or, you know, whatever the structure is. So we will be coming back to you with a couple of proposals as to, hey, here's option A, B, C. What are your thoughts about, you know, how this partnership should be structured? And we'll be doing that across, you know, all 13.
So by the end of 2023, we may have a plan in place that we can execute in 2024? Or is it that quick?
Yeah.
Essentially. If we get plan approval, if we get plan approval in 2023, we've always envisioned the first couple of years of planning implementation is going to be finalizing the organization that we're working on now. So I don't know that we'll be jumping into projects right away in 2022. If we get the approval in the first quarter or even mid-year, I think it'll take probably into the following year before we're really organized and we have all the agreements in place, and then we can begin the implementation process.
Yeah. So if we have a heads up, say, two, three years ahead of what our role is going to be and how much it's going to cost us, that would be, you know, a great heads up.
Certainly. Every municipality is going to want that for budgeting purposes. And, you know, we're shooting for that. We have a, we have a tool that's helping us divide up the responsibility and the cost. We just need to get an agreement on some of the parameters on that tool. But, I mean, that will help inform the municipalities. This is, this is going to be your level of responsibility, and the cost is likely to be this much per year over the 20-year implementation period.
And the dividing up the roles is going to be based on how much creek is in our township?
It's about, there's three main factors. It's not only the amount of creek, but it's also the amount of impervious surface, because that's what's generating the stormwater that's causing the impairment. There's a population factor, because that creates flow at our wastewater treatment plants. And wastewater treatment plants are part of this process as well. So there's three or four parameters that we're going to be using.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm really happy to hear an update on the whole project.
Thank you. Good questions.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming out and talking to us. Next up, we have a couple of comments. It's the time where comments on agenda items that will be taken when, or any items not on the agenda. I know that we had an interested group, Lower Gwinnett Business Association. We weren't certain if they were going to be able to be available tonight. And we're going to use this opportunity during public comment to talk with them. Is Darlene?
Hi.
Hi, Darlene. How are you?
I'm great. Thanks. Thank you for inviting us.
No worries. So can you tell, I know that you asked some questions of us as far as the future of the Lower Gwinnett Business Association. Do you want to give us a little bit of what your concerns are? And then open it up to questions from the board?
Our concerns is that, or that, people, getting people to participate. Our membership has gone down drastically over the past two years. I think we're now at just about eight, 20 members. We used to have over 100. It's very difficult to get people to come out to go to any type of a meeting. They, you know. So basically, we just can't afford it anymore.
Okay. Just really quick, can you confirm, is the LGBA nonprofit a 501(c)(3)?
I don't believe we have filed for that.
Okay. And currently, currently and or previously, did it include businesses outside of Lower Gwinnett?
It did. It did. There were some businesses that were wanted to join so that they could do business in the Lower Gwinnett. There are people that want to keep it confined to Lower Gwinnett and more surrounding areas, like Spring House or Ambler.
Okay. Darlene, are you currently the Business Association President?
No, I am not. I have a volunteer position. And my position is strictly handling the, strictly handling the website and emails.
Okay. Is there a board?
We have two people on the board. We have a treasurer, Ken, and we have a vice president, Beth. And she is outside the Lower Gwinnett area.
So Beth doesn't have a business within, you said Kim or Ken?
Ken.
Ken. And does she have a business within Lower Gwinnett?
Ken has a business in Lower Gwinnett. It is Hebron at Financial People in the Ship House.
Ship?
Yes.
Okay.
In ship.
Gotcha. So currently, no president, no secretary?
Nope.
Okay.
And we did send out a message to the members about a month ago. And there were a couple of people who said, well, there were about six people who said, please do not close down because, you know, you're still valuable. But there was only about four people who said, yes, they would still participate, and no one volunteered to be board member. There was one person who said, yes, she would, she would probably do it.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm in the beginning, I wasn't sure if I heard you right. You're down to 20 members? Or did you say eight members?
We're down to about 20.
About 20. Okay. So the structure of your organization is as a for-profit? You're accepting dues from every business?
We are accepting dues. The dues pretty much go to pay for the website.
Okay.
The dues are $100 a month, $100 a year. And our website is $155 a month.
So I think what you were asking us was for direction as to if we wanted.
I think the help of Lower Gwinnett would be significant. Your, and your sponsorship would be significant in helping us getting back together again.
Okay. No, I just, one last question, because I did review the minutes that we had on our share drive. I guess, go the date back to like 2017, 2018. There was a discussion about you guys pursuing the 501(c)(3), and it was tabled. So I just wanted to know, is that something that you guys would consider moving forward with? Usually, bids or business improvement districts or these types of business associations are fueled with grant funding and have the opportunity to receive grant funding and distribute it. Are are fueled with grant funding and and have the opportunity to receive grant funding and distribute it. To the businesses that participate in their association and kind of hold other things. So I guess my question is. Are you willing to move to the nonprofit NGO type of space?
There was, um, as you said, a conversation years ago about we would love to do that. Um, I think it was a matter of getting help in doing it.
Okay.
And, uh, funding to apply for the money.
Okay. I'm sorry, are there any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of questions. Um, what is it specifically that you would like from the township?
Well, your help, um. The, um, attending meetings, telling people about going, about joining the, um. About the Lower Gwinnett, just your, just your help and and getting things going back on on track. We used to have wonderful meetings. With the supervisors, um, what with the township once, I think they were in the morning. And that was, that was, that really brought people out because they could hear from the sponsor, from the township. Plus, we could have our meeting afterwards too, so. Think that would be a big help.
Any additional questions from the board? Okay, Darlene, do you have any additional questions of us?
Not at this time, thank you. I thought Ken would be on the meeting, but he is not. Um, thank you for your time and thank you for letting me attend.
No, we appreciate you taking the time to speak with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other, um, numbers of the public or comment? Being none, um, we're going to move on to general business. Um, first up is the appointment to the Lord of One Town to have Human Relations Commission. Um, we had a a good amount of of volunteer applications that we greatly appreciated. We did take time to speak with every applicant and do a Zoom meeting when possible. Um, there was a couple of applicants that were not able or not eligible. Three specifically, I believe, that were not eligible because they either did not live in Lower Gwinnett. And or, um, they held an elected position. Um, so with that, we we did reach out and we are making recommendation for the following. Five applicants to be on the Human Relations Commission. Um, Jimmy Chong, Andrew Abramson. Christine Lamar, Stella Lee, and Meredith Work. Um, I'm going to make a motion to the board, uh, that we approve those five candidates. For appointment to the Human Relations Commission. Are there any questions from the board? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Are there any, uh, public comment? So we have before us a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys, all for your willingness to volunteer and greatly appreciate it. Um, next up, we have a discussion about the Ingersoll Drainage Improvements requested by the Lord of One at Little League, and I I think we do have representatives from the Lord of One at Little League present. Uh, just to go over really briefly what we're, um, reviewing, Lord One at Little League submitted a proposal for improvements to the ball field at the Ingersoll Park. Um, and asked that the work be done this fall in time for the upcoming baseball season. Because the cost exceeded the minimum bid requirement, the work would have to go out to public bid, uh, by the township. It unlikely that it would be able to begin this fall just because of, uh. That process essentially. However, our township staff and consultants have reviewed the conditions, um, and had some. I guess, feedback to share with us and or we wanted the Lord One at Little League to be here to hear it as well as, uh, provide any questions or concerns. So I guess we will start with. Fred, you want to start, Fred? Jim, Jim, you want to start? Jim looks startled.
I think Fred should start.
Nice.
Um, so we agree there's a water drainage problem, especially on the infield at the Little League field. And we did look at their proposal and it certainly would help, uh. Temporarily, I think, and I think, um, if the Little League. Representatives are here, they agreed that it would be more of a temporary fix, and we were looking at more of a. Comprehensive way to not just the fields, but the whole property, get better drainage across the. The whole property from one side over to the other street. Um, so that's something that Jim was looking at. But I believe that this. Uh, for a short-term fix would definitely help the situation there.
Just to clarify, it's not just drainage. I think that there's like that little lip and is that lip caused by the drainage issues?
The the lip, I think, is because of the age of the field, and I'm not sure. I would want to check with the Little League. I think that's just a normal. From use of a field and putting more dirt, infield dirt, and it starts to build the lip up there. The lip, I think Public Works could remove, but again, it would have to be scheduled in with their. Schedule, so we don't disturb any games or, uh, cause any. Uh, interruption in being able to use the field. It's. It is all along the infield line, the infield dirt of the one field. It is, it's a pretty steep lip. At this point, and I think it's just from years of put more dirt in, it gets pushed and the grass mounds up a little bit. So I think that's fixable. Um, without too much trouble. It's a matter of scheduling to make sure we're not interfering with games and we're not, um. Waiting for the grass to grow when they want to use the field and stuff like that. So I don't know if that's. Helpful to you guys, or you have questions, or if there's. Anything else?
I have a couple of questions, but I don't know if Jim, do you have something you want to add first? Sure, if you you just have to get the microphone to you, I'm sorry.
Are you guys with the township? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is our Public Works Director, Fred Zollers.
Okay.
And Jim Hirsch is our, our.
I was just curious, that wasn't clear on that, so.
Okay. So, yes, I'm sorry I didn't introduce you properly. Fred Zollers is our Public Works and Jim Hirsch is our engineer. This is Lower Gwinnett Little League, guys.
So, when we met, I met out there with, uh, someone from the Little League, and I don't think he's here, Janine, do you remember?
Chris Wilson, I think, yeah.
Okay, and when we looked at. The site as a whole and and drainage issues that exist on the site, I think that there's a. Good amount of water that comes from like the Georgetown development down across the field and probably contributes. To a lot of their drainage issues. Um, unfortunately, like. Exploring where all that comes from and and how we can correct that is a is a pretty big undertaking. Um, I think we're, next Monday, we'll be talking about budgeting for for large drainage projects like such as that. Um, I think that like the proposal that they have to res- reskin the field was how it was explained to me. Um, and sort of regrade it would certainly help, but I think the the problem is that. Over time, it's going to deteriorate to be kind of what it is today unless we correct. The underlying or overarching drainage issues. Um, I, my question is. When was the last time the field like had an undertaking like this happen?
You could just tell us your name.
Sure, it's Adam Taylor, uh, with the Little League, and there's three of us, three other board members here as well. Thank you for everyone's time. I really appreciate it tonight. Uh, it was about a dozen years, about ten to twelve years ago was the last time there was a major undertaking of the field. Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it that they recommended every? Ten years or is that, okay, if it's right, so it's it's really, I mean, now's the time, you guys have seen it, there's significant drain issues. I don't. Necessarily, I think if we band-aided, it would last very long. That's why we're really seeking a major. Overall, you know, so we don't have to keep looking at this every single season.
I I think the concern is that your overhaul is a bad.
Correct.
Because you were not addressing the the cause of the problem.
But it seems like it's a ten-year band-aid.
Right, but right, for sure, so. So we have, we have a couple of different things, right? We have one, we have to get you guys ready to play in the spring.
Right.
And two, we we are obligated that we have to take it out of public bid. Right, so there's a time, there's a timeframe for all of that. So the reality is, we're not, I know you guys need to do this yesterday before, I mean, this has to be done within the next month at the latest. We won't have the public bids. It's not, it's just a function of when we got the request and the law, right?
Right.
So. To me, it seems like we have to work on the larger issue. The immediate issue of getting the field ready, and then the sort of intermediate ten-year plan issue of. Um, redoing the fields. But I think to Jim and Fred's point, if we don't address. I think the hope is that if we address the drainage issue from Georgetown. You're not going to have to do this quite as comprehensively every ten years. You'll always need dirt, you'll always need to move some stuff around, but that. Once we deal with the drainage issue, it shouldn't, the the problem shouldn't come back so quickly.
And am I understanding, Fred, that you think that you can do a temporary band-aid with the Public Works Department? In the interim to get them ready for this upcoming spring?
But would 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 what they're proposing now, okay, understanding that it's a ten-year band-aid, right? Would that address that? Do you see that right there?
Yeah.
Would it, would what they're proposing address that? At least for the next few years? Right, and we can, we can assume, I'm gonna guess here, I'm no engineer, but. The drainage issue might be able to be solved. By something on the roadway as opposed to, right, I mean, more storm grades, I mean, tied into the sewer system, I mean, I'm just. Spitballing here, you know?
I like it. Um, so what we would be looking at is is essentially what you're talking about, cutting off the drainage before it gets to the field. So I'm not sure that we would really need to install much drainage in the field itself. If we could cut off the majority of the water from getting to the field, and then once the field is reskinned and and laser graded the way the proposal. It has it said, um, the the water would run off those graph or those, uh, dirt areas and then into the grass and it would. It wouldn't be as nearly as much volume and nearly as much standing water.
So I guess in theory, we could do a temporary, Public Works folks could do a temporary fix. We could put this out for bid, assuming, you know, we can, we pass this and appropriate the money for it. Put it out for bid, get it fixed, maybe not in time for spring, but. Immediately after the season ends, and you have the temporary fix, and then work on the drainage issue, and it's not, it won't impact. The money we're going to spend on the field, right?
Yes, I I agree with that.
Okay.
So I, I guess the question, are there any other questions from the board? Question I have, I guess, and this is of, it might be of our manager. With the functionality of of the bidding process and how long that takes, we know that we will not be able to do that. Before the frost, before the freeze, and then they wouldn't be able to to deal with the dirt and all of that. Does it make sense for us to vote on this now? Or or to amend, if we vote to amend our, um. Our agenda to consider this now because it's not on, it's just a discussion, or is this something that we can consider later on after we've passed our budget for next year and?
If you want, you could authorize advertisement to go out to bid and just trust the engineer to come up with good specs. I I don't recommend that. It it's a good two months to go through the bidding process. So, you know, some of it depends on the weather. If you have a mild winter. And depending on the work that we come up with, but but maybe it's something to to think about is if. Um, if if Jim or or other folks from Gilmore maybe can go take a look both at what the Little League was proposing. What Public Works can do and figure out what's the most effective band-aid that could be done in time for. Um, before the season gets start, gets started, instead of like going ahead with with this, try to figure that out, and maybe one other thing to consider then. It, and like, so what's the fastest, most cost-effective, fastest, and, you know, hopefully going to last longer than just one baseball season, right? Like, what what's the best plan for that? And maybe the board could think about, um. Whether it would make sense to see if we could swap out one of the parks that we got a grant to do a master plan for. Which was Oxford and Penambler. I think Penambler would be difficult. You'd probably be looking at swapping out Oxford Park for Ingersoll Park. And do the master plan before you spend any more significant dollars and just really make sure. There aren't other changes. You wouldn't want to go ahead with all those drainage improvements, and then there's something else you're going to do, and it's going to shift things and. Ju- just to make, because they they won't be cheap, I don't think. So that may be something that that you want to think about, and I don't know. How now, go back to putting Jim on the spot, if, you know, it's possible to to build. Just looking at what the the folks from the league are proposing and taking a look out there, is there something that can be a little bit faster, easier to build? That's likely to achieve the goals that everybody wants to achieve?
Yeah, I think that what we're looking at is a temporary fix by Public Works in the spring or prior to the spring, right? Because when you guys start playing, April, May? So, you know, as soon as as possible, and then exploring. A bit bidding of of something more substantial, but then you also need to take a look at the park as a whole. Because I've heard, uh, talk of a concession stand bathroom. I've heard talk of this drainage issue. Parking issues, like, I mean, this quadrant or, you know, triangle of land is is right for some sort of master plan. To figure out what you guys would would like to do with it. I mean, whether you decide to. Um, kind of put on hold master planning for one of those two parks that we already have. The 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 grand four and 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 sub in this. I'm sure the D C N R or D C E D would would probably entertain that. But that's kind of for you guys to decide.
I I I'm I'm in favor of that, only because I I suspect that there's more lower wedding residents who are in Ingersoll Field than any of the other parks. By.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what do you guys think? We, there's practical realities to this. So I'm I'm interested to hear your thoughts on this plan.
Don't be shy.
Well, thank you for everybody's consideration. I I think, could you help us understand practically what that would mean for us?
Right, so we would, what what, at least as I understand this, and Fred and Jim, you can correct me when I'm wrong. That for this upcoming season, we will move dirt in, you know. Lots of dirt to get the field in a playable condition, so you don't have to let. It will not affect the drainage issues that you experienced, it just will not, and we're not going to be able to do it by then. So that's to get you through twenty twenty-three spring baseball and hopefully the tournaments. After that. Or we'll we'll put out for bid the skidding of the field. And that if it can be, you know, it sounds like the time to do that is after the summer when it's not squishy hot. So a year from about now, we'd be prepared to skin the field, assuming we it's budgeted. And then while that is going on, we will also determine the the drainage issue. But the skinning of the field will help with some of that in the short term, but in the long term, so you guys are going to, I guess, long story short is. Assuming we budget this money for the reskining of the field, you're going to be stuck with this field fixed. But not the way you guys want for twenty twenty.
So I understood it's slightly different. I understood that we were going to have Fred kind of do, figure out what he could do and kind of work with Jim to figure out how we could as public, our Public Works Department. Mitigate it as much as we possibly could, but that Jim was going to come back to us with a proposed plan to see a. Quickly evaluating him and and Gilmore to see if there is a quicker way that we could actually skin this field, and if your proposed plan was the best way to do that. And if it's possible to get it done prior to your sea- prior to your season, not saying that it would be. But we'll at least we'll have a clear answer, so that we weren't totally saying no. Um. Please correct me if that, isn't that what Mimi was kind of iterating? I thought so. Jim did not, but Jim didn't answer, and I was going to have a few questions for Mr. Hirsch.
No problem.
Is that a possibility?
I just.
There's more than one way to skin a field.
I had to say that.
With the, the level of work that has to be done to the field and you, you need to have temperatures conducive to, to growing the grass and/or getting the sod to establish, I just don't think realistically that you can do that work between now and when they would want to use the field in
Between now and March?
In the spring, yeah.
So we should just kind of dissipate the idea of even doing that research?
Yeah, uh, uh, just with, with the, what we talked about with the public bidding requirements, it's just, it's too hard to, we can't rush it enough to hit this fall planting season because frankly, it's two weeks away, then it's over. And we can't get it all done and have it be established in the prior to the spring.
Right, and on the drainage issue, you know, the things that we have talked about is, are the bathrooms, you know, we're looking at grants for that. And if that comes in, that's a big piece of impervious surface. That's going to impact where the water's gonna go. So until we have that figured out, spending it, you know, we need a little time to figure that out. Um, mindful that you guys need to play ball, you know, March-ish. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I, I, my name is Jeff Garcia, and I also appreciate the time to discuss this. So just, just two things based on some of the feedback you guys had. So I was there for all the quotes here. So I, I don't, I don't see this as a band, and, and I know we can't rush it. I, I'm not saying, you know, give us the money tonight. I'm not saying that. But I don't see this as a Band-Aid, because when this, when the fields were skinned 10 or 12 years ago, whenever it was, they were just skinned and replanted. There was no grading or anything that occurred. The way, the way the, this proposal proposed, or the, the contractor proposed it, it was more so regrading and repitching. So both fields would be pitched to the stone area in the middle. And, and obviously there's gonna be more water in that stone area. But hopefully it could act more as a French drain as opposed to being on the field. So I think if we were to do this and do proper maintenance annually, I don't think we'd have to redo a field in 10 years. We could just do what we need to do annually and, and keep the fields in great shape. That, that's the first thing. Second thing, the, the cutting of the lips, we certainly could get sod cutters and cut the lips. I think what we've seen two years ago or three years ago, I forget, we, we as a league spent about eight grand to put new dirt on both fields. And, and what we found is after about two or three rains, it ends up in the drains that are in the, this, the, you know, on the, along Pendle Blue Bell Pike. So it, it's a great fix for a few weeks and then we have the lips again. So I, I appreciate, I appreciate the offer to do that. But I, I think that's even a larger Band-Aid because we're, the, the drainage definitely washes that dirt away. And, and you can go look at those pits and you'll see the dirt that we paid for two years ago. Thank you.
So I, let me just respond to that.
Yeah.
So I, I'm no engineer. I don't know if what you're saying and what is in your, in the plan is, is accurate or not. I mean, all I can do is rely on the township center here. And looking at that, but ultimately, even if you're right, we couldn't do it this year anyway. I mean, that's so, so my, the, the bigger, so just with the reality of us being a public body and the, the rules we have to follow, we couldn't get to the bidding process before planting. Right? Everybody agrees with that? You guys understand that? No, no, no way. So, so the question is, what can we do for 2023? So is, is, is spring a good time to plant? I, I want to know, please.
Yeah, so, so they, actually, so with the, what the contractors have told us, right, is, is like, as you said, we needed to tell them last week we could go for the fall. Obviously, we're not gonna get that. They could do it in the spring. If they plant by March, um, we, we couldn't use the field for one month because the fields have irrigation. So if we got it done March first, we use the irrigation on the fields, we can use the field April first. It's so
Assuming a mild winter.
Correct. Assuming they can do the work and be done March first-ish, we could use it in April. It's really one month from the time they're done, we can use, use, use the fields. And, and we have other fields to use. So we, if we got it done early spring, I think it still is a benefit to the league. We might not be able to use Ingersoll for a few weeks, but we'll have fields once we're done.
Okay, so we could at least bid it out and see what, how it comes back. Also still look at the stormwater issues. I mean, that's a problem throughout the township, something that we need to prioritize.
Yeah, I think this goes back to Mimi's suggested path where we are potentially, if you were to budget for it, uh, we're preparing specs and we're putting it out to bid uh, over the, over this winter, which is like a perfect time to put things out to bid. And um, then we're also taking a look at the park as a whole and the drainage issues. Because like you had talked about, um, if we regrade these fields and it pushes the water to this stone area in the middle, well, maybe that stone area in the middle doesn't need to act as a French drain if we actually install some drains and um, get the water to go. Uh, there's a creek on, just on the other side of uh, the Pendle Pike there. So like, there's definitely, uh, I think what they're proposing is, is probably the best idea for the fields. And I think that there's probably a good idea for the, the park as a whole. We could kind of maybe integrate them together.
So this is
Problem solver. Jim's a problem.
Jim is a problem solver. Um, so this, so you would come back to us with recommendations for us to consider. And this is not, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding. This is not related to the master planning, or is it? That with the grant funding that we got from DCNR. And then if, if it isn't related to that, you want us, I know, to swap out Oxford, would you be able to? You don't have the answer right now?
I don't know. I want to talk to Judy about what her thoughts were on Oxford, Penambler, that we got the, the trail between there, right? So we have a couple moving parts. I want to talk to her about kind of what she would think would be a good budget for master planning of Ingersoll. And then we can see how we can, how we can do it.
Okay.
Oh, we could budget for that too. Yes. Well, storm, stormwater management is good for the environment.
So Jim, um, if, if you don't address the parking up front, is that going to really come back to bite us because it's a hard scape? Um, if, if, if there's no drainage put in around the parking areas?
I think that if, if we were to do a master plan of the park and decide, uh, uh, you know, if you guys were to decide as a community that you wanted to add additional parking there, uh, and added impervious surface, then we would have to account for that in some, some manner of stormwater management.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm finding it hard to try to imagine the sort of Band-Aid approach without looking at the, the whole triangle together. Um, and figuring out the baseline, what we need to do to going forward, maybe not deal with the house that's there, the, the old school, but just the lay of the land and the garages and all the different aspects of, you know, suggestions that people have had. But the, the underlying thing, of course, is the stormwater management, which probably needs to come first, but um, I don't know if you can do that. And if you can, do it in parallel, that, I guess that that's the optimal path. Does the Little League need anything for like the rest of October, November? Or we're just talking about next March, April?
And fall ball concluded? Okay.
And Jim, you'll be able to tell whether this sort of plan with tilting the, you know, like putting the field on some sort of slope that it drains water into the middle between the two fields, that, that'll have to work. Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, we're not going to evaluate their, their proposal and then tell you to go out to bid for it if I don't think
We need to, do we need to sort of think through, to Tessie's point, not maybe with the drive, the parking lots, but with the bath, like where is it gonna be? I mean, we, we sort of, don't we have a game plan?
We have that game planned out. We apply, we apply for that.
Okay.
I mean, I, we probably put it on a, we cited it on a plan where we thought it made the most sense.
Was it Brightfield?
No, it was actually in the exact location that the existing concession stand is.
Okay.
Right? And uh, instead of just being a concession stand, it'd be a concession stand and, and bathrooms. And then we laid out where the um, grinder pumps would need to go and, you know, where the sand turbines would need to go. Uh, but that was just sort of what my office put on a plan to submit for a grant so we can maybe get some money. And if we were to get the grant money, then we'd be back in front of the board and the, the Little League and the community to figure out where exactly that should go.
We're not waiting for that spot.
Yeah, no, absolutely not. And like, I think that that kind of goes back to the master planning. Like, it would be beneficial if we were working off of a plan where everybody felt comfortable where the amenities were gonna go.
Okay.
You guys good with that plan? Yeah, go ahead.
When are we getting another five for Tom?
Fun passing the baton back and forth. Yeah, yeah, I think that what I was gonna just add is I think that, you know, the, the near-term solution obviously is the safety of the kids for, for the spring. I think that we're gonna be able to find a way to, to get there hopefully for this, this part of the season. Um, but as you mentioned earlier, I think that Ingersoll is a part that is highly visible to not only our township members every weekend, um, but also, as you mentioned, term and season, we have local communities that are also spending their time there as well. So I think, oh, speaking closely for us, I believe, but we're hoping to finding any way to think about the bigger picture and to make this kind of a place where we want people to come into town and, and kind of see what we have to offer there. So I mean, to work, to fix the fields is obviously very important for the day-to-day for the kids, but also the things that spectators, for the parents, for grandparents that come, and make sure that we have that opportunity as well. So you know, I think my, my main comment would be whatever we can do to help provide that, you know, kind of context and work together with everybody in the room, all stakeholders to make sure that it's a positive outcome for everybody. You know, we're willing to work with you guys to do that. And so just if there's anything that you guys think of now that we can help prepare, I think that we're more than open to, to doing that.
Uh, yeah, I think this line of communication is good with Fred, Fred and, and you guys should have more contact so that we're, you know, because he can be more in the loop on, on what the issues are and, and be more prepared to address things and the safety of the kids obviously is very important. So um, I think it's good for more, more contact between our guys and your guys so that we can all work together on those fields.
And Fred comes to all of our meetings. So if you told Fred like a memo or he could then give it to us and you guys wouldn't have to come out here on a Tuesday.
Yeah, he could just give a report from, an update from you guys.
But I think it was
No, no, I appreciate the fact that you took the time to come and got your questions answered.
Yeah, just so you guys know, practical realities and it sounds like we have a game plan going forward and, you know.
Do you want to give us a rough estimate, Jim? When you think you could have that, um, very rough?
Pass some time back.
I mean, I can get, we can get out to take a look at it in, in the next few weeks. And I mean, if we're going to, if the board's gonna budget for the reskining of the field in 2023, then like we would, and we wanted to, to start March 1st, weather permitting, uh, we'd be looking to put it out to bid in probably January.
Okay.
So I mean, we would need to start working on the, the specs and plans and such pretty quickly.
Okay. I just wanted to give them a ballpark idea so they had something to go with. So potentially in January it would be, he would bring it to us so that we could advertise and go forward that process.
Sure.
Go through the bid process and selecting the winning bid is gets you a part of the way there. But then we gotta get on that winning bidder's schedule. And who knows when that'll be. So the sooner we can get through this process, obviously, and I know we
Yeah. So what we, what we do when we put things out to bid that need to be done by a certain time is that there's a draft contract in the bid documents and that draft contract has uh, times and they have to, you know, at least they have to meet that time, yeah.
Okay, great, perfect. That work for you guys?
Are there any additional questions from the board? Any additional questions or comments from the public? Thank you guys so much for coming. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Fred. You know, we put you on the spot there. Next up, a discussion about our comprehensive plan. I, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie. Um, just want to kind of give us a little bit of update about the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, um, so I met with the county um, planning team on October 5th. There is a memo in everybody's packet. And we discussed, um, you know, trying to start the process out with um, a focus area, which would be the two large parcels, um, the old uh, Siemens property, and then of course, the Spring House Innovation um, Park. And kind of focus on these two groups um, first, prior to really kind of commencing the comprehend, uh, the comp plan revision process. So um, I detailed it in the memo that was circulated and I'm just looking for feedback if the board is okay with kind of going through the process, starting with this particular focus area first, and then moving into the normal comprehensive plan process.
Just had one question. Is there, is there the ability to add a third? Is it, so like, I understand that they want to focus on Siemens and Chip just because of those two parcels and, and their size and
Yeah.
Um, we added the business quarter, I guess that's too much?
Yeah, um, I had suggested that to Eric and his initial response was, um, you know, that's a really large piece of the comprehensive plan. Really kind of the main piece. And so you can't really pull that out as a focus area because of the size of it and how long it would take. It would really delay the entire process significantly. Um, and it impacts everything as a whole. So to pull it out, it really should be considered in all, um, in the entire plan itself. It's definitely a focus area that will be, you know, um, but it, he's suggesting that that particular focus area needs to come at the end.
Okay. It, was there any justification or reasoning why these two areas were the ones that they thought maybe we should focus on?
Um, just because of the time, like, just because of timing, yeah.
And the fact that the normal process of the comprehensive planning would put the focus roots at the end of the process, which you know, this is of the essence of
Right, it might be too late to really
For the two major parcels in the running township, and I think it makes a lot of sense. Okay.
Um, and then the other item in the memo was about, um, the steering committee. So really the next step is identifying the steering committee. And Mike, you had asked last time about how many members are on the steering committee? And they said the ideal amount is nine. Um, anything larger than that, it's, it's too complicated to get people's schedules to jive and get everybody in. So, um, um, but so they're thinking that, you know, we should have representation from um, the Planning Commission, uh, the EAC, the Park and Rec Board, um, and then like we had talked about previously, um, reaching out to people that had expressed in, in interest in the revitalization um, committee. So and then the other thing, um, the, the public will have a lot of opportunity throughout this process to be part of the process and to weigh in and provide input into the plan and feedback on the different sections that they've completed. Um, so you know, the public will still have a big role, even if they're not directly on the steering committee.
Okay. So he needs, the next step, when is he looking for those recommendations?
Um, they're gonna start the background work immediately. So um, it's not delaying them. It's just really, I would say, we definitely want to have an idea by December. Um, I don't think we should, I think we should know by the end of the year so that, you know, because he doesn't think that the, the actual committee meetings and things like that won't start until the new year.
Okay. So I guess we have to start to reach out to see if the individuals who identified from the Bethel Pike Revitalization Committee can commit and kind of go through that process.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do we need to decide like how many planning, is it one person from the Planning Commission, one person from the EAC? Like, how do we?
Well, I think you do have the dual membership on the EAC and Planning Commission. So you could, you know, you could consider those two people because they're kind of both, um, you know, um, you, you don't have to, but it's just a, an idea. Um, and of course supervisors can also serve on, on the steering committee. Um, but I would say, yeah, like one or two and if you have overlap there.
It's, so the Planning Commission is also gonna be the body, uh, other than the board, that spends the most time implementing the recommendations and any zoning ordinance recommendations if you're gonna do it. Um, you know, SADO, uh, an official map and, and other plans that may come from that. So you might want to think about two Planning Commission members. Um you know, SADO, an official map and and other plans that may come from that. So you might want to think about two planning commission members just um because it they're just key in this.
Yeah, and they have a lot of uh they have a lot of knowledge already about the township, you know, they
So is it possible that we could have the staff or potentially you up um pull at least those committees to see who has the time, availability and interest? And then from that list, we can kind of narrow it down a little bit more, figure out who the representation should be. With the understanding that everybody's a resident in a little
Do we put it out for other folks to apply to be on it or is that too?
I I don't I think you would wanna select the people based off. I don't I don't think you want to just leave it open to
It's not like a typical committee.
Yeah.
I agree. So you're comfortable, Jamie, reaching out to the members of the identified committees? And the only other thing I was gonna say is um is there any benefit to someone from the historic committee being part of it?
Sure.
I would just include them in the ask to see who is available at the time and and interests.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for that update. Are there any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Thank you guys so much. If we're gonna take a pause so that Lower Gwinnett Little League can leave. I'm surprised you're still here. Next up is the two thousand twenty-three budget overview of of operating revenue.
So the staff is working on the overall twenty twenty-three budget. And as we've mentioned a couple of times now, we're gonna do more of a deep dive with the board and any of the public who cares to join us on capital projects next Monday night. Uh but I wanted to just start to to give you a a snapshot of where we're at with revenue. We'll do the same thing at the next meeting for expenses and then pull the whole budget together to present to you at the first meeting in November. So uh in your packet, you have a summary of operating revenue for all of our operating funds except sewers. So kind of a general fund, operating revenue overview. Um although in that I'm lumping in the fire protection fund, the hydrant fund and the recreation fund because we we pay operating expenses out of those funds. So uh the I just wanted to to hit a few highlights of of how these taxes work, how the collections are going and see if you have any questions. I promise to be brief. The the most important thing for you to know in your revenue is the earned income tax is the the meat and potatoes of your how we pay for things here. It's half of the general fund by itself. So it's a it's a very large tax and and one revenue source um that everybody relies on. That is paid mostly by residents. So that means our bread and butter comes from the people who live here. Residents who who live in Lower Gwinnett pay one half of one percent of their earned income, only earned income. This is a wage tax, not a personal income tax like you pay to the state. Um they pay one half of one percent to the township and one half of one percent to the school district. Now, what's interesting is that non-residents pay one percent to Lower Gwinnett if they work in Lower Gwinnett and do not live in a municipality that has an earned income tax. So they pay twice as much, but there ain't a whole lot of them. So residents still continue to be the the bread and butter there. That's the the big ticket. Property taxes are what usually get um the most attention if you're considering raising rates because it's the only tax that you can raise rates, the millage rate. But overall, with with the the overall assessment, it's fifteen percent of your your total revenue. It's it's not insignificant. You can see it's one point seven million dollars. It's it's real money, but it's also relatively smaller percent of of the overall budget, considering the attention sometimes that it it takes up. Overall, eighty percent of the revenue in township annually comes from taxes. Um the other, the the realty transfer tax and the the other business taxes making up the difference. The transfer tax is all over the place these days. It makes it very difficult to budget kind of overall it it because it it distorts the twenty twenty-two revenue because it's so high. Um and it makes it hard to guess what's likely to happen next year. It feels like the real estate market certainly it it is slowing down a little bit. We know that as interest rates are going up. Feels like it's it's gonna slow down some. It doesn't feel like it's crashing. So the the eight hundred thousand dollars is actually an estimate from Berchheimer's. Um but what I want to call attention to is that the tax that was collected in twenty nineteen, so pre-pandemic, was four hundred and forty-one thousand. So if we start going back to those levels, it it's certainly much more of a dip. The um the twenty twenty-two projections and the twenty twenty-three budget figures that you have in the summary for the earned income tax, the mercantile and and business privilege tax, local services tax and realty transfer tax, all came from Berchheimer. Actually, I'm sorry, the the transfer tax did not. The first three came from Berchheimer. They collect that tax. They came up with what what they expect through the end of the year and their expectation for twenty twenty-three. Um for the especially for the mercantile and business privilege taxes, but also to a little bit lesser extent, the earned income taxes, they have collected some back taxes. It's part of what's inflating the numbers in the twenty twenty-two projection. Um they they can't say with certainty, but it's been a higher than usual amount of back taxes that they've collected. So they recommend budgeting a little bit less in twenty twenty-three than we're likely to collect this year. That's why the number's not so much that they they're they're budgeting for a slowdown in the economy. It's just more of um don't expect it's you can't keep duplicating the level of of collection.
What what does that mean? Is the percentage increase based on twenty twenty-two? Why?
Budget, I'm sorry, versus, yeah, yeah. And that is just because twenty twenty-two project normally I would look at a if I'm comparing to prior year, I would do the projection, but the projections are so high. It it looks like you're, you know, revenue's going down and it it is compared to our collection this year, but not the trends of of where we've been. So some good news is that it does look like the tax base for the real estate tax is going up more than reassessments or bringing it down. That's still a little bit of a guess. We won't have final numbers for the assessed value that the real estate taxes um the millage rate is applied to until November. We'll get that from the county, but we get monthly reports from them. Um so that's at least what I was thinking last week when I put these numbers together. And then I came into work today to a big stack of reassessment notices. So that's the hard part. So we, you know, with every time somebody gets a building permit, that is sent to the county that we send monthly reports to the county and the assessed value for that property goes up. When there is development or redevelopment, that's, you know, increasing the assessed value, not the property, the market value, the assessed value asset by Montgomery County. But a lot of property owners are also appealing their assessment and winning. And that's partly because the assessment's so old, that's just gonna keep ramping up. There's gonna be more and more of that until the county finally reassesses. So that's definitely eating into it. But you're at about one point three eight nine billion this year in assessed value. And it looks like you will get close, maybe just a little bit past one point four billion dollars of assessed value in Lower Gwinnett Township. That's probably half of the market value.
Right.
Yeah, that was interesting. You shared those assessment um report with us.
Mm-hmm.
I've never seen them before.
Oh, yeah, they they are interesting. There's
Yeah, yeah. Certainly has an impact.
Uh huh. And there's, there's a lot of activity going on.
So it it just just wrapping my mind around it, the the major takeaway that I'm fifty percent of our of our revenue comes from earned income tax. And we've made, we've maintained that consistently pre-pandemic essentially and post-pandemic. So the assumption is individuals in Lower Gwinnett are employed. They're remaining employed. They survived the pandemic employed. That can be a consistent measure that we can depend on. Yes.
So as long as the country doesn't go into recession.
I didn't want to say the word. We don't think we're supposed to.
Just it it's again, so that's why I wanted to say that it and I can understand I I talked to the uh person at at Berchheimer who had put together the projections. You know, it's the the timing is a little bit harder here in guessing what's gonna happen with twenty twenty-three. I will say, I I also want to um emphasize, these are initial revenue estimates. We still have a month to be looking at this a little bit and trying to guess what's in the the crystal ball. I mean, you can see it it's that there have been a lot of raises in Lower Gwinnett. Hopefully, at least maintain that. I mean, that that's be my guess. I wouldn't expect it really to be going down like off a cliff kind of going down. Whether it will keep going up at the rate it has been, I think, it feels like more of a stretch.
Are there any questions from the board? No, thank you, Nene. Thank you so much, Mimi. Appreciate it. Um next up is the approval of our amended solicitation ordinance. Two weeks ago, we authorized advertisement of the ordinance, and I think that we all have had time to review it. Uh we have a memo from our chief related to the to the actual ordinance itself. Um are there any questions from the board?
What what was changed in the word? What what I guess what's added? What's? It doesn't look like anything to the moon. This is an existing ordinance or this is a new one?
This is a new ordinance. Yeah, but this essentially replaces it.
It's is there any consistency between? So I guess my question is currently in Lower Gwinnett, if you want to solicit door to door, do you have to get fingerprinted or is that?
The current ordinance, that would be up to the discretion of the chief of police.
And what's the criteria for granting or denying a permit? I mean, I saw it in the ordinance, but it seemed like there was some level of subjectivity.
Not really. Um it's pretty hard to get denied. Um if checking one person's criminal history, if they're a burglar, we're probably gonna deny them.
Seems fair.
Probably.
No accidents. Um if they've um had a permit in a neighboring town and it's been revoked for maybe the way they treat residents, we'll deny it. Um so we do a a little background on somebody that's applying for a permit. We do fingerprint everybody.
And what's the consequence of not having a door without a permit?
Uh there's fine. It's solicit is soliciting without a permit. So it's a citation.
And what's the reason you fingerprint them?
Uh so we really know who they are. Um most solicitors that go door to door, most of them that we find don't live in Pennsylvania. They're hired by a company to come out and sell products. And they'll just be dropped off at nine in the morning and picked up at six at night. And there are a lot of them are college kids from out west. Um we're going by a a driver's license photo, so it's just safer to have their fingerprints.
And so one thing I get at least three times a year is somebody knocking on my door because they're in the neighborhood and they're blacktop and drab. And do I want mine? That would fall under this?
They should be getting a permit, and if that happens, you should be calling the police. A lot of those are scams.
But if it's but if we really did see that somebody's blacktop in our neighbor.
Correct.
Then they came over.
Correct.
Because my neighbor sent somebody to me.
Right.
Okay.
That's very common. And I shouldn't have said it the way I said it.
No, no, I
But they, you know, a lot of times they that truck went to the quarry. Whether it comes back half full or full. They're better off having it full and and doing the job next door.
Right.
So you'll see Parker is right down the street here in Spring House. He tries to get every neighbor in a row.
Yes.
Uh he doesn't want him. He doesn't want to move all that equipment.
So just as a person who is almost, I I feel like it's harassment at this point, the sheer number of people that are coming to my door. Is there gonna be a place where we actually designate the things that aren't solicitations? Um meaning, I know that uh campaigning is not solicitation. Nonprofits are not considered
Religious affiliate, you know, religious organizations, we can't stop them.
Exactly. So just so that it's clear, I don't want our residents to be calling the police and the Girl Scouts or you know, just on a, you know, a religious organization that's coming to
Right.
any other nonprofit.
Call them from the Lower Gwinnett Business Association, it sounds like, if they came knocking on your door asking for a solicitation, right?
Before they become a nonprofit because they're not
Someone that has to get fingerprinted and go door to door. Correct. To maybe where they have, they would have to be fingerprinted, get a permit to hold it.
One of the newer things with this is that you can exclude your residents from solicitation. You can be on a no solicitation list. And it's one of the things that some neighboring towns are doing. We're gonna incorporate that into this ordinance. Um private property, there's some uh developments that are private property. They're not dedicated streets, not allowed to solicit in those neighborhoods.
But the key is understanding what solicitation is and what what it's not.
Correct. There's the def the definition defining the term.
So they can't, I mean, they they can call the police on you. It it was called on me when I was campaigning, but I I I mean, just to say that the police can't do anything if you're not actually soliciting.
Correct.
Well, is that true? I mean, if you don't want someone on your property.
They can't say it's illegal to leave.
Yeah.
But it's
Yeah, I understand, right.
But it's not illegal for you to be there.
Until they ask you to leave.
Correct.
Yeah, you know.
Okay. Sorry. Are there any additional questions from the board?
My my only question is, did we get any feedback on that? And we advertised it. I mean, obviously, nobody's here to speak on it, but was there any?
No comments on my side.
No comments from
What was the impetus to update this?
I believe it was from the chief, correct?
Yeah, there were several things that Neil noticed in the previous ordinance, and I'll turn it over to Neil that.
Yeah, I mean, the original uh solicitation ordinance was actually adopted in nineteen fifty-eight. The last time anybody looked at it was two thousand and twelve. Um so a lot has changed since then. I noticed there weren't any specific provisions for exemptions such as people campaigning for public office. Um there wasn't a clause that dealt with when a permit application could be denied. Um there were just a lot of things missing from the ordinance. It it needed to be updated in a bad way.
Yeah. I believe you. I I just, it's a little bit surprising to me. I've been in Lower Gwinnett for twenty-five, twenty-six years now, and I I can't remember more than a couple of times somebody coming to my door to sell something. I mean, it's just not
Really?
Yeah.
I get like three or four a week.
Yeah, we have some areas that get hit a lot. And you know, I can I can tell you exactly where the furniture people from North Carolina are going. I know what neighborhood they're going to. They do very well there. They go there all the time.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, um gonna move to us to adopt um ordinance of the township of Lower Gwinnett, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the provisions of part eight, title four, chapter eight fifty, peddling, soliciting and transient sales so as to delete in its entirety the current provisions of chapter eight fifty and in lieu thereof adopting new provisions of the Lower Gwinnett Township Code related to peddling and solicitation and the creation of a no solicitation registry. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Neil.
Um next up, we have receipt of the invoice history. Has the board taken um chance to look at the invoice history? Are there any questions from the board? We don't need to make a motion to accept. It's just a review. Next up is the approval of the minutes from our September twenty-seventh and September. Is that correct? I need to prove the minutes. Um September twenty-seventh, is that the correct date? Uh you're talking about when we were at Gwinnett Estates? No, twenty-seventh was our board of supervisor meeting. What's the twenty-ninth?
EAC.
Oh, the EAC. Okay, I'm sorry. I've gotten confused. Um approval of the September twenty-seventh regular board of supervisor meeting and September twenty-ninth EAC EAC and board of supervisor joint special meeting. Um have the board taken a chance to review those minutes? And are there any questions?
No questions.
Seeing none, I make a motion to approve the September twenty-seventh and September twenty-ninth um board meeting minutes. Uh we do have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed is none. Opposed, opposed. Thank you so much. Motion carries.
And thank you very much for those minutes. They were really good. They were really
They were very thorough, actually. So you need, we need a motion for the invoice history. We do. So we're going to go back up to the receipt of the invoice history. And make a motion to approve it, the the September twenty twenty-two invoice history.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Committee reports. Since we last met, I believe that there has not been any committees that have met. I just wanted to confirm. We were all at the EAC.
Right. There was that meeting, but we we might just give a shout out to the the tree committee that had a successful tree giveaway.
Absolutely. October first, the successful tree giveaway. Let's give a shout out. Thank you, Tess. Staff updates. Are there any updates from staff? Okay. Supervisor comments. Let's start with Tessie. She kind of gave, you gave the shout out, so you can just go from there.
I I don't have any further comments.
Nor do I. Janine?
Nope.
Go, Phils.
With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You need adjourned. Thank you.